Thanks, Mike.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to get started, at least with the preliminaries here. This is the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole regarding bill numbers 130489, 130724, 140140, 140144, 140145, 140146, 140147, 140148, and Resolution 140159. Please note that Bill Number 130489, the non-utilization tax bill, is being held to the call of the Chair. I would ask Mr. Decker to please read the titles of the bills and the resolution.
Bill Number 130724 entailed an ordinance amending Chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by authorizing the School Reform Commission to determine whether certain tax exemptions from the School District of Philadelphia of real estate taxes shall continue and by making technical corrections. And Bill Number 140140 entailed an ordinance amending Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by decreasing the rate or rates of the tax imposed by certain low-income persons, providing for refunds of excess taxes paid, directing the Revenue Department to develop procedures and forms whereby eligible taxpayers can obtain such refunds and requiring employers to provide refund forms to employees. And Bill Number 140144 entailed an ordinance to adopt the capital program for the six fiscal years, 2015 through 2020 inclusive. And Bill Number 140145 entailed an ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2015 capital budget. And Bill Number 140146 entailed an ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2015. And Bill Number 140147 entailed an ordinance amending Section 191806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on the use or occupancy of real estate within the School District of Philadelphia. And Bill Number 140148 entailed an ordinance amending Section 191801 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on real estate within the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 140159 entailed a resolution providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2015 through 2019 and incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2014, which is to be submitted by the Mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council approved by the Mayor on January 3, 1992, Bill Number 1563A, by and between the City and the Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Today, we are continuing the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole to consider various bills read by Mr. Decker that constitutes proposed operating capital spending measures for fiscal year 2015, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal year 2015 through fiscal year 2020. Today, we will hear testimony from city departments regarding revenue measures. Good afternoon, Commissioner. We're back again.
Good afternoon, sir. How are you?
If you'd like to proceed, I think Mr. DeBeau, I guess, is coming too.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but you can proceed with— I guess it would make sense to read your testimony on all the bills, and then we'll have questions on whatever bill, okay?
Okay. I'll read the testimony with regard to Bill 140148 and 140147.
Okay.
Good morning, Council Chair and members of this committee. My name is Clarina Tolson. I'm the Revenue Commissioner. I'm here to testify in support of Bill Number 140148, which extends the authorization of the school district to impose a real estate tax in fiscal 2015. This bill would continue the combined city and schools' tax rate of 1.34 percent. Fifty-five percent of the funds raised through the property tax go to the school district. The city's five-year plan anticipates that the ratio will remain in place over the life of the plan. I'm also here to testify in support of Bill Number 140147, which extends the authorization for the school district to impose the U.N. O., the Use and Occupancy Tax in fiscal year 2015. The Business Use and Occupancy Tax is a tax on the business trade or other commercial use and occupancy of real estate located in Philadelphia. The tax is collected, and the returns are filed by the owner of the property. The estimated current use and occupancy tax is projected to be $138.3 million in fiscal '15, all of which is allocated to the School District of Philadelphia. In fiscal 2015, the tax rate will remain 1.13 percent. For the tax year that began July 1, 2013, and thereafter, there is a $177,000 exemption amount from the assessed value of each property actually used for the purposes of doing business. This translates into a $2,000 annual tax exemption. Both bills are essential for generating the funds we need to support our schools. We thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Okay. Thank you. On these two bills, are there questions from the Committee? Seeing none. Commissioner, I think you want to testify on one other bill? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please.
Bill Number 140140. Good afternoon again. Again, my name is Clarina Tolson, Revenue Commissioner. Excuse me. I'm here to testify on Bill Number 140140. This bill would offer refunds to the low-income Philadelphia residents and non-residents that are eligible for the Pennsylvania Special Tax Forgiveness Program. The amount of the relief would be 0.5 percent of wages subject to the Philadelphia Wage and Net Profits Tax. Excuse me. The administration shares the desire to put more money into the pockets of low-income Philadelphians and has evaluated the ability of this proposal to achieve that goal efficiently and effectively. We estimate that 100,000 Philadelphia resident fathers and 60,000 non-resident fathers would be eligible to participate in this program. At 70 percent participation by eligible taxpayers and a refund level of 0.5 percent of income subject to the wage and net profits tax, the program would refund $5.5 million to Philadelphia residents and $3.8 million for non-residents from the wage tax. An additional $114,000 would be eligible for refund from the net profits tax. That's $114,000. The average refund amount to a participant in this program would be about $81. This proposal requires a significant expenditure from the general fund and a large administrative effort to provide a relatively modest increase to the amount of money in the pockets of low-income Philadelphians. To successfully administer this program would require $2.3 million annually to support operations. The total annual cost of the program would be $11.7 million, with less than 50 percent of those funds reaching low-income Philadelphians. Given this, the administration will work with council to identify an alternative successful approach to addressing economic needs in our community, one that will efficiently and effectively put more money into the wallets of low-income Philadelphians. We thank you for the opportunity to cooperate with you today and offer this testimony. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. I actually do have some questions on this one.
Excuse me.
I guess the first one is, could you provide some more detail on how you came up with some of these figures? As far as the average refund would be, you say $81. The program required $2.3 million to annually to support operations, that kind of thing. A little bit more breakdown, because there's some of us question those figures.
Sure.
Okay? So, I mean, and I don't mean now, but if you could forward that, like, the sort of computation, if you will, of how you're coming up with all this, because we'd like to see that. I think that's important. Because I have to tell you, the whole idea behind this, and Councilman Good was the co-sponsor, as I was with the council president. As you remember, last year, we did away with the low-income tax cut that was normally called the Cohen Tax Cut. As you can imagine, some of us, including me, took a little grief over that one. But the argument was made, it was going to—it was taking too big a hit out of the budget. It just, you know, it was going to cost too much. So, we came up with a plan, and the one thing I definitely will agree with you, it's a relatively modest proposal. But that was the whole idea, you know, to at least help low-income people somewhat. You know, in the perfect world, we'd like to be able to help them the way the previous bill did, but, okay, you know, we listened to the argument that it was taking too big of a bite out of the budget. Some people disagree with that, but, okay. But now, we've got something that's, as you call it, and we agree, relatively modest, and that's not good either. And I guess I'm a little confused, and I guess maybe, and I don't know if you or Mr. DeBeau or somebody could explain this a little bit more to me. One's too much, one's too little, and you say you're going to have a plan, and I'm not saying this just to you, but you had a whole year to have a plan. At least we got a plan. And you've heard Councilman Jones and others talk about a plan for poor people, a poverty plan, that kind of thing. And this is, again, relatively modest. I'm going to keep using that part of that plan, but it just seems to me that rather than just saying you don't want this or don't want that, isn't it fair to ask that you offer something specifically? So, that's a long question, but I don't know if you have any comment, or anybody else in the administration would, but it's a little frustrating.
And I appreciate that, Councilman. I think it's certainly fair commentary that you would expect for the Revenue Department to do all that it can to align with the goals that council is trying to project here. And I think that's what we are saying, that we are certainly supportive of. And in very short order, I think that we'll be able to present some things to council that offer some alternatives you might find to be viable. And in medium terms, I can share with you the computations that went into the commentary that we had here today. But I appreciate the concerns and frustration that you've expressed, and that's fair.
Okay. I appreciate that, and I thank you. And I think we—excuse me. This bill was introduced about two months ago, is that sound right? Again, wouldn't it have been fair to have, again, offered something before that time? Again, I'm not saying this is your decision, so you're sitting there, but it just seems that, you know—again, I appreciate you said, "We're going to sit down in the future." But, you know, obviously, we've got to pass a budget in a couple of weeks, and I can tell you, just speaking for myself, unless I can really be convinced that this is not the way to go, personally, and just speaking for myself, I plan to vote for it if it's called out, okay? So, if there is another plan, I'd like respectfully to see it as soon as possible, or at least see something about it, because that's awfully vague that we will sit down later and come up with a plan. Again, we cooperated with the administration last year, again, and getting great heat in some cases for the vote we took, and now we come up—then we come up with another plan, again. It's one's too big, one's too little. There's got to be something. There's got to be something, you know, so.
Understood, Councilman.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. And again, I'm not—
No, I understand where you're coming from.
Okay. All right. Is there any other questions or comments on that, on this bill? I'm seeing none. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I think Mr. DeBeau's going to be giving the testimony on the—
We actually weren't planning to give testimony. We were planning to give all testimony. We're just admitting, but I understand Councilman Good has questions.
Yeah, shockingly, Councilman Good does have a question on this issue.
Yeah.
So, okay, so you just want to submit your testimony and—
Yeah, and answer questions.
Submit your testimony and answer questions. Okay. Councilman Good?
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. DeBeau. I regret your submitted written testimony. You already know that I have issues with it, and your testimony is based upon an analysis that was done. So, let's talk a little bit about that analysis.
Sure.
Why was the abatement analysis over a 30-year period?
We wanted to look at the long-term impacts of the abatement and any potential changes.
Why 30 years?
As opposed to—there wasn't any magic to that amount of time, but we wanted to look at long-term.
So, 30 years is not a magic number?
No.
Okay. The analysis assumes that we won't do anything else to mitigate the impact of construction costs over 30 years. Why is that?
The analysis was just looking—the question that we asked was to look at this legislation and what this legislation did, and then we asked him to look at a couple of other abatement options, but we didn't look at anything beyond abatements, because it wasn't in the four corners of the question.
Why would we assume that we wouldn't do anything else to mitigate the cost of construction?
We weren't assuming that we would or wouldn't do anything. We were looking at a specific question, which was the impact of abatements.
Why wouldn't we create another incentive that doesn't take money from the schools?
We are not commenting here on whether—if there are other incentives that are effective, we would like to look at those, too.
Okay. I mentioned one to you a year ago. How about a business tax credit for construction jobs?
I think we'd be interested in talking about that and how that would work.
Okay. I mentioned a different timeframe of analysis. Would a 17-year analysis tell a completely different story?
Well, the crossover, I guess, is about—is 18 years. So, yeah, 17 years would—
Tell a completely different story.
It would.
Okay. That's why I find the findings in your written testimony to be fraudulent. And we've had discussions by email already, and so we're going to run through it. For the record, there is no adverse impact for schools from this bill in year one. Is that correct?
That's correct. The crossover is about year 18.
I'm going to run through it. Year two?
Again, not till year 18.
Year three?
Same answer.
So, there is no impact—adverse impact over 17 years for the school district?
For the school district. There's an adverse impact on development and jobs, but not on the school district.
Okay. So, there's only a positive impact in the school district. How much would the schools get over those 17 years?
It starts off at about $700,000 a year, and obviously, then it eventually—
It doesn't start off at $700,000. There's a chart in the back that you can refer to.
Yep, that's what I'm looking for.
And my question is, how much would the schools get over the 17-year period?
Sorry, I'm just trying to find the right case. Through year 17— I just make sure I'm reading it correctly. I think it's out. Yeah, I'm just having problems reading it. You sort of tell me.
You might need a calculator.
What?
You might need a calculator. Which chart are you looking at?
On page 24.
Are you looking at the— School Performer?
Yes.
You're on the wrong page.
Oh, I was just looking at the school district phase-out one. I see what you're— You're looking at the case where we don't do anything.
No.
That's what page 23 is. Okay. So, I think we're still seeing the 14 million.
How are you seeing 14 million? Over the 17-year period?
Yeah.
Okay. How much in year one?
The year one is $560,000.
Just identify yourself. We know who you are, but just identify—
Marissa Waxman, Deputy Commissioner for Tax Policy from the Department of Revenue. This is a cumulative total, so year one is $560,958.
Okay. Year two?
Year two, which is cumulative, so it's year one plus year two, is $1.167 million.
Okay. And so, cumulatively, in year 17, it is what?
$14.81 million.
Is there any adverse impact projected for the schools before the year 2031?
That would be year 16, right?
It would be year 17, I think.
17. Not to the school district revenues.
Okay. And so, your testimony today suggests that you don't want the schools to receive more money between now and 2031, where there would be no adverse impact on the school district, minimal adverse impact on the city, because of what's going to happen between 2031 and 2044?
Our testimony is that we don't want—we don't support the legislation because of what it means for development and jobs, and adding on top of that, in the long run, it has a negative impact on the district. That's our testimony.
Not if you create—if you create an incentive that doesn't take money from the schools.
But that's separate from this legislation.
It is separate from this legislation, but I mentioned to you a year ago, that's the better way to approach it. I mean, essentially, the city, if it believes—and if your testimony is, if this is such a great investment, such a great program, then the city should do the investment. It should not take money from the schools. The city should give 45 percent, buy right, and then look if there is a issue with construction costs, crafting another incentive that could be a business tax credit for construction jobs. But why is there a need to take money from schools?
Well, again—
If that issue can be mitigated otherwise, and if you know that over the next 17 years there's going to be no adverse impact on the schools, but there's going to be a net gain.
Well, there's still a negative impact over the longer period, because as the development— as they lose the impact of new development, they start to lose revenue.
There is no adverse impact if you subsidize the construction costs otherwise?
Well, there's still a negative impact from this, right? I mean, this still has a negative impact, even if something else is providing a benefit to development. This legislation by itself has a negative impact.
It does not.
On—
It does not.
This analysis shows it has a negative impact on development and jobs.
This analysis shows that there is a drop-off in construction if you don't find a way to control construction costs or otherwise subsidize construction costs. Why would we not do that when it will take 14, 15 years to have any impact on real estate revenue to the city, and will take 17 years to have any impact in terms of real estate revenue to the school district, in terms of adverse impact?
Because by—this is still having a negative—you can do lots of other things, even if this bill doesn't go in place, that can help with development. That doesn't mean that this won't cost development.
And so, the city chooses not to invest, but to take money from the school district to invest?
No, I think we're open to investment, and we do invest, but this bill by itself costs us development.
This bill gives money to the school district with no adverse impact for 17 years.
But an adverse impact in the longer run.
Maybe, if you don't do what I suggested you do a year ago, which is, I find a way to subsidize construction costs without taking money from the schools.
Look, we're all for figuring out how to get more construction.
I don't think you are for figuring it out. There's a way to figure it out. It's a better model for the city to—and you're making the case that this is a good investment. I'm not arguing against it being a good investment. I'm not even necessarily fully challenging the analysis. What I'm suggesting is that the analysis tells us that for 17 years, there's only a positive impact on the school district, and so the school district possibly should get that money. But you want to take that money from the school district, that's your testimony, and not even let the SRC decide. You would take that money from the school district rather than have the city invest and subsidize the construction costs.
Well, the testimony is that, over the long run, it costs money. So, it's not that we want to take money from the school district.
The school district otherwise getting money over 17 years, the first 17 years, the school district can get more money with no adverse impact on the school district.
And after that, they would get less money.
So, you are robbing the school district for the next 17 years.
But not over the longer term.
But you are robbing the school district over the next 17 years.
We are looking at what happens over the longer term, and we're looking at what happens to development.
Okay. Maybe we should change your name from Rob DeBeau to Rob Million from the schools. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Just another general question, Mr. DeBeau, and I know you're talking about revenue to the schools here, but you say in your testimony additionally, other city tax types, wage, business sales, real estate transfer, would see lower collections. Do you have any—and I'm sorry if this was answered, I got a little distracted. Do you have any estimate on what that would be?
No, we actually intentionally didn't want to put any other—we didn't ask him to analyze any other impacts, because we wanted to look at just the property tax. But if there are fewer jobs, it means there's going to be fewer wage tax revenues.
I guess in some way, don't you have to delineate—maybe not right here, but delineate that in some way? Because, look, this has been a controversial subject for a while.
Right.
And I don't know where I am sometimes on it either, so—but it's—I guess, you know, the more information you got, the better.
Yeah, we can do that analysis, if you want. We can definitely do that analysis.
You know, I think at least it maybe is part of the picture.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely do that.
Yeah. And I guess the other very general question is, I mean, there have been suggestions, mostly by Councilman Good, of dealing in different ways with the tax abatement issue. I think the administration has opposed each one, at least those particular ones. Is there anything, as far as the abatement as we sit here today, that the administration would support, or—and this goes beyond just the school. I'm just talking generally, because, I mean, we've been kicking this around for a while.
Yeah, I mean, I think—I think we can talk about it. I think we're open to the concept, but obviously, the specific proposals so far, we have not supported.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. DeBeau? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize he'd keyed up again. Councilman Good?
The truth of matter to me is that you don't want to change the program at all, that you're not for any modification of the program. You're not—you can just say that for the record. Because you're not for modification of the program, then what it means is that the idea that I suggested, that we simply do a business tax credit for construction jobs, rather than take money from the schools, you're not going to pursue. And you're going to take money from the schools over the next 17 years and not even let the SRC decide.
I think we've gotten back and forth on this, and I don't think we're going to go into referring with it.
And the analysis that Councilman Greenly asked you for, tell me exactly how you're going to do that.
I'm not sure. We'd have to develop a methodology for it.
We've already had that discussion. In order to talk about how much wage tax revenue you're going to get, you have to know where these people are going to work in the future, which doesn't make any sense. In order to know how much sales tax you would get from it, you have to know where people are purchasing now, where they're going to purchase in the future. So, you'd be coming up with another fake number.
Well, I don't think we've come up with a fake number yet.
I don't know. I think the analysis—
And this analysis—please let me finish.
Go ahead.
This analysis does have projections for job loss, so we could determine how we could translate that job loss into a further tax loss. That's what we would do.
It has a projection of, and I'll just say for the record, 1,200, 1,300 construction jobs, and that's why you should simply do a construction job tax credit and replace the school district portion. And because you know what the number is, it's easy to design a program. And not to look, design a program— And not to look, design a program is either lazy, hard-headed, or not acknowledging the school district need real money, as you're taking money from them over the next seventeen years.
As I said, we've gone through that in this hearing before, and we're not going to get any further.
So, how much money, just for the record, for my question, how much money are you taking from the school district over the next seventeen years?
We gave you the number, fourteen million, and said that in the longer term, it actually, in the longer term, it actually costs the district money.
If you don't do what you should do, which is create another incentive.
It will, we can go back through this again. That's not, that's not specific to this legislation. This legislation costs us.
Congratulations on taking money from the school district over the next seventeen years, knowing that it's not going to have any adverse impact on the school district over the next seventeen years.
But it will in the longer term.
It only has positive impact. If you can look into the future, between the years two thousand thirty-one and two thousand forty-four, you're good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any questions for Mr. DeBeau on this bill? Or any other questions at all for the, the bills that have been presented today? Seeing none, this committee will stand in recess until Wednesday, May twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, at one P.M., at which time we will reconvene here in room four hundred, City Hall. Thank you all for your participation. And for those listening on the Rules Committee, we will start at two o'clock.